Good evening. Calling the meeting to order, and if we could all please rise. And Councilmember Rob Donavich will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Donavich. Good evening, and welcome to the January 27th, 2020 Studies, January 27th, 2020 Study Session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,890th Regular Meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, February 10th, 2020. We have all members of the council with us tonight, and I don't see everyone's here. I do not have any announcements, council. Does anyone else have any announcements they'd like to make? Yes, Councilmember White?
I don't see an announcement, but I would like the council maybe to consider or having the administration look at the subject of local response to climate change issues with the wildfires in Australia and California, the flooding in Missouri and other states. I, a few years ago, had the good fortune to visit Alaska, and we were able to view the icebergs and heard the locals say, well, yeah, well, those icebergs are a lot smaller than they were a few years ago. And so I don't think anybody can really ignore the issue of climate change, and I don't think we can necessarily, as a local unit of government, leave it to the federal government, which has been debating the issue, and who knows how long that issue will be debated. And I recently came across a report that was done by the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and they surveyed 182 cities, and they found that 60% of them have initiated or expanded local climate change response programs in the past 12 months. And the report also says that 57% of cities will launch or significantly expand a climate initiative or policy this year. And they can be anything from clean transportation projects, renewable energy, building efficiency, and things like that. So there's a lot that local government can do to at least, you know, try to address on a smaller scale the issue. So I'd like us to consider referring the subject of possible efforts that the city of Livonia could undertake on climate change issues to the administration for a report.
So we'll put that on the agenda for the next regular meeting of Monday, February 10th, 2020.
Thank you.
We'll vote on it. Anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
This is on a lighter note. A couple of meetings back, I mentioned that Mr. McCullough and I were participating in a PTA chili cook-off, although none of us won because of our chili, that goes without saying. Mr. McCullough did win for designing his table to be the prettiest table at the contest or the most interesting. And I say prettiest, not as a joke, really, but his theme was frozen, I believe, on some level, but he also brought out a giant four-foot magical unicorn that lit up, and this, I think, enabled him to win. So I just wanted to give him his due kudos and congratulate him in regards to the effort.
Appreciate it.
But like I said, the chili, neither one of us won for the chili, so...
No, no. It was a great event, and I think they did pretty good, and, yeah, it was the snowstorm, so bringing in a giant unicorn was definitely worth it, so...
Good.
On my part, I tried. I brought in a six-foot blow-up rocket for the Hoover rockets, but his unicorn literally shined past everything else.
It was nice.
What happened to that rocket, Councilmember Donavich?
Well, nice job. Very nice job.
I want to know...
My wife's minivan.
I want to know who had to wear the Elsa costume.
There's pictures out there.
Well, it sounds like a great event, and better luck next year on your chili, but well done on your decorations. Anyone else? All right. Would anyone from the audience, before we begin on the agenda, if anyone from the audience would like to address the council on any item not in this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. All right, seeing none, we will proceed. Tonight's meeting is a study meeting; there will be no votes taken. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or a resolution referring to a committee or a city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that are simply received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Monday, February 10th, 2020, where they will officially be voted on. If you'd like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please approach one of the podiums on either side of the room when the item is called, and you will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation followed by remarks from those in the audience wishing to speak. So please come to the podium when the item is called. When you reach the podium, please state your name for the record, so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes for the meeting. It will also let the television audience and the council know whom is speaking to them. And with that, we will move on with our agenda. Item number one, this is all under new business, is a request for a proclamation for the League of Women Voters. This comes to us from Paula Bowman, President of the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County, to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment and the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters as a public service organization. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. We have a number of League members in the audience. Raise your hand.
Okay.
In Livonia, our League originated in Livonia in 1960, that is, our League chapter, and about 25% of our members are from Livonia. We also service the other communities in our, in Northwest Wayne County, too.
And you are...
I am Paula Bowman.
Okay.
I'm the president of the Northwest Wayne County League of Women Voters.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of the League of Women Voters serving this community, we're certainly grateful for your good wishes on the League's 100th birthday and for the opportunity to call attention to the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. Many of us had grandmothers or great-grandmothers who could remember their complete disenfranchisement from participating in government that created laws and enforced those laws about them, since before the Civil War, women and men have organized, marched, protested, lobbied, and have even gone to jail in a collective fight for voting rights for women. We can be proud that Michigan gave women the right to vote in 1917, three years before the Amendment, the 19th Amendment, was ratified, and then, of course, Michigan was one of the first states to ratify the Amendment in 1919. This was not a cakewalk. The 1917 vote was preceded by two unsuccessful attempts to change Michigan's Constitution in 1850 and 1857, and among other protests, there were three separate, different petition drives to bring women's suffrage to the state legislature. The petitions were virtually ignored. Legislature wouldn't even call a vote. But eventually, equality prevailed, and women did win the right to vote in 1920. The League of Women Voters was organized as a result of the passage of the 19th Amendment, and its main purpose then was providing candidate and issue information to the 50% of the now voting population who hadn't voted before. Over the nearly 10 decades of our existence, the League of Women Voters has applied the lessons learned in those early days to engage and empower all voters. As we celebrate the 100th anniversary of the League and the 100th anniversary of women's suffrage, we are reminded that government of the people, by the people, and for the people cannot function without the active involvement of the people. This is the year to remember the struggles of our ancestors who fought for the right to vote for all citizens. This is the year to increase Michigan's voter turnout from the embarrassingly low rate of 63% in 2016. This is the year to realize that thanks to the passage of Proposal 3 last year, voter registration and no reason absentee ballots have made it more convenient than ever to exercise the privilege of voting. This is the year to realize that there is more power at the ballot box than complaining on social media. We ask all of you here, and I know you will, to join the League of Women Voters of Michigan or of Northwest Wayne County to urge all Michigan voters to make our democracy strong by voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
To Ms. Bowman and the other League members, thank you for all you have done through the years, the Candidates' Night you so graciously put on for all of us, and the information you provide. My aunt was a suffragette and marched, and I have one of her little pins that she received. She's long gone now, but you also influenced, as I recall, when I was on the council some years back, us to have audience communication at the beginning of our meetings, which we never had done. So it's because of the League of Women Voters that we had adhered to some of the kinds of suggestions you gave us. And then, when I was president, one time, I said, why did they walk all the way around? Let's get two podiums and two mics. So we were, as you talk about that the ballot is inviting people, we've invited people more so with, like, our president and past presidents, to accommodate our residents that come in and be gracious enough to invite them, because, you know, their input is very important to us. So thank you for all you do, and thank you for all your suggestions through the years, too. It's made a big difference.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I'll just say thank you, and I'll share a brief story, but as I'm sitting up here, having you stand up there, and your friends sitting in the audience, I'm half nervous, wondering what question you're going to ask me that I have to answer appropriately. So we're always on the hot seat, and that's a good thing. But, you know, my colleague here mentioned her aunt, and I can say clearly, you know, I and many of us, and most of us, I would say, probably learned about women's suffrage and the movement that it took and stuff like that in school. But recently, in the last couple of months or so, I had an opportunity, I was watching, of all things, Mary Poppins with my daughters, who are, you know, almost nine and almost seven. And there's the one character, I think it's the mother or the aunt, who is fighting for women's suffrage. And trying to explain that to my daughters, that women couldn't vote at a time, just blew their minds. They couldn't understand, and having that conversation with them allowed me to see it through their eyes and just absolutely how absurd even thought of them not being able to vote, not being able to participate was. So it made me appreciate the suffrage movement and those who fought for it in a different kind of way. So I'll just, I'll share that, that clearly the effort has gone a long ways, because the mindset of these little girls is they expect nothing less and a whole lot more in terms of their democracy. So thank you again, and hopefully no questions before you sit down, so, thank you.
I will say that we are so appreciative of all of you Livonia candidates that we have seen at our candidate forums. That says a lot when all of you are there, because it tells us that you are anxious for your voters to learn about you, and you're giving them the opportunity to vote with some kind of, with the information they need to make a sound decision. So we're all volunteers doing this, but we need your help to inform the voters, too. So we're grateful for all your help.
So, Madam Chair, we need to move this, I guess, right? Yeah. Oh, pardon me, I'm out of turn. Go ahead.
I was just going to certainly echo the sentiments of thanking you for all that you've done and having that heavy up. I mean, those candidate forums are my favorite parts of the campaign, so I really appreciate you doing that. I am going to piggyback off something you said, though, to make a point which I don't need to make to you, you already know this, but, you know, you say this is the year, and you compare it to 2016. Just want to take it as an opportunity to remind people that we have a total, in my opinion, unhealthy preoccupation with presidential elections in this country. They're important, but we've had three years of elections since 2016, including one where we've already seen the impact. Trust me, I know, as some of the other people here do, of that Proposal 3 that passed. It's already very much in effect. Clerk Nash can certainly attest to it as well. It's just important for people to remember that as much attention as the presidential election gets in those years, you can make a really strong argument that the years in between actually have way more impact on your life than that does. So, and again, I don't need to tell you this, you guys are very involved with all of those, but it's just an opportunity to remind people of that.
Very good point.
So move.
All right. Madam Toy? I mean, Madam...
Me.
I'll get it right.
Yes.
Counselwoman.
Just, I'd like to move the, let's see, what is it? What do we need here? We need to commemorate the anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment and, as well as the 100th anniversary of women voters as well.
All right, so we will be putting together a proclamation, correct? That does not require...
I'm sorry, what?
Consent.
Consent.
Does that require a vote?
Just on the agenda.
It's on the agenda. I would say, I don't want that on consent. I think if we're going to be celebrating voting, we should be voting.
All right. Okay, so we will place that, we will place...
They got to come back.
You don't have to come, but we will place it on the regular agenda for the meeting of February 10th, 2020. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your lovely words and inspiring words, Ms. Bowman, this evening, and to all of your colleagues who came. All right, moving on to item number two. This is a reappointment of Laura Weingarten to the Livonia Board of Ethics. This comes to us from the office of the mayor for a three-year term, which will expire on March 1st, 2023.
Is she here?
No.
No, but she's not able to be here this evening. Mr. Burnier.
Ms. Weingarten gave me a call yesterday. I talked to her on the phone at length. If I could, I'd like to present this for Ms. Weingarten. We worked together at the prosecutor's office for 25 years. She's a 30-some-year prosecutor, retired from there. She did, like, over 20 years in the child sexual abuse unit. I don't know how she did 20 years in that, but God bless her for doing it. She is currently on the Judicial Tenure Commission investigating judges who may go astray. None of ours, but other judges that may go astray, she investigates those. She has a son who's a police officer and another son who's a lawyer, and they're longtime Livonia residents. So the mayor would like, is asking for your approval and consent on that.
Yes, Counselwoman Toy.
The reason I ask is there is no bio on her in our packet, unless, I'm not seeing it, and I appreciate your words, Paul, thank you, but it's helpful to have a bio on folks, and I think Ms. Weingarten's been on this before, right?
She's the original member of the board. She's been the board since it started.
Yeah, it's also, it's helpful, because we got a couple of new members on here and refresh our memories, so that would be helpful to have some of that background when it's submitted to the council. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd be happy to offer an approving resolution, and I would ask that this be on consent.
Okay. Any objections to putting on consent? And also, so noted that Counselwoman Toy has asked that when appointments or reappointments are submitted to the council, that we be given at least a summary resume, so people who are maybe newer to the city, new to the council, can get the same, get an understanding of the background. All right, with that, we move on to item number three. This is a request to purchase four replacement cardiac monitors. This comes to us from Livonia Fire and Rescue from Zoll Medical Corporation. They are the sole supplier, and this comes from budgeted funds. Good evening, Chief Hevner.
Good evening, Madam President and fellow council members. I am here tonight requesting an approving resolution to purchase four Zoll cardiac monitors. This equipment is used on a daily basis. It is critical to providing high-quality care to our residents in the community, and this equipment will complete the department's, department-wide upgrade and standardize all frontline cardiac monitors on all fire department vehicles. The old monitors are well beyond their life expectancy, which is about seven to 10 years. Currently, those monitors average 18 years of use, so we've certainly got our money's worth out of them, and plan to be traded in to reduce the overall purchase price of the new equipment, and we will be receiving $3,000 trade-in per unit that we trade in to help offset the cost of the new equipment.
Thank you, council.
Madam President?
Counselman Jolly.
Just a question, because this is the study meeting, a quick question. When we say cardiac monitors, are we basically talking about, like, mobile EKG units?
Correct.
Okay, so that allows, I mean, it's easier for people at home to understand and people to understand what we're investing money in here, but that basically allows the, your people who are out there trying to serve us and protect us in health situations know our health status as we're being transported to and from?
That's precisely accurate. They are mobile cardiac units where we can read, interpret EKGs, and then render various types of advanced life support remedies, including medications or other electronic type of interventions in serious life-threatening health conditions.
So clearly, a very important piece of equipment.
It's critical, and it is required for us to have on all of our vehicles that are licensed as advanced life support units, which all of our frontline vehicles are.
With that, I'll offer an approving for the consent agenda.
All right, anyone else? All right, we will place it on consent agenda. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number four is a request to modify the agreement between the Conference of Western Wayne and the City of Livonia Youth Assistance Program through September 30th, 2020. This comes to us from the Department of Community Resources to receive $17,178 to be used for the Youth Employment Resource Program, the Youth Assistance Group facilitators, and jail tour expenses. Good evening, Mrs. McCann.
Good evening. I'm here to ask the approval of the modification. This really just extends the contract, the agreement, until September. We still get our $17,178. If you don't know what this program is, it's a diversion program for first-time juvenile offenders, keeps them out of the court system. They have to, they have to have some classes, community service. We do jail tours, so they can see where they would end up. It's a very successful program. We don't have a lot of recidivism.
Madam Chair.
Right, council?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Counselwoman Toy.
Director McCann. Director McCann, is this, we used to have that scared-and-straight program, do you recall that?
I think there was, it went along with the jail tours.
Right, right.
They still, they still do that.
They still do it, right?
Yes, they do.
That's what I thought, okay.
It's a requirement for all the kids.
Yep, yep, and that, as you pointed out on that whole thing. Well, thank you for the outstanding work you do, and I'll offer an approving.
All right, on consent?
Yes, please. If there's no objection.
No, we'll place it on the consent. Thank you, Mrs. McCann. Item number five, this is an award of bid. It comes to us from the Public Service Division for a five-year elevator maintenance program for the period beginning January 1st, 2020, to December 31st, 2024, with funding to come from the building maintenance budget. Good evening, Mr. Roroff.
Good evening, council. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Don Roroff, DPW. As you mentioned, this is a five-year contract for the 10 city elevators. This did go out to Mitten, and it's pretty straightforward. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we will be recommending the low bidder, which is Elevator Technology, for $82,596. They've had the contract for the last 10 years, and they've done a good job for the city. And again, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman McCullough.
So just to kind of give, this would probably include the state certifications, the load tests that are required, and probably time and materials for any repairs that needed to be occurred on?
Absolutely.
Okay. I've actually deal with this on my profession, and that cost seems well in line, and I would be willing to offer an approving resolution for consent.
All right, thank you. Any objections? We'll place that on consent. Thank you, Mr. Roroff.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too. Item number six. Item number six is a request to approve final cost information to authorize additional appropriation and expenditure. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for the 2019 sidewalk program contact, Contract 19-G, Council Resolution 96-19. Mr. Leir.
Hi. Yes, this is our yearly sidewalk program final numbers from 2019. There is a breakdown of what was authorized and what the final costs were. We're actually very close to what was originally authorized. There was an additional number of houses that requested sidewalk be fixed in front of theirs, and that's the bulk of why it's a little bit over. We were quite a bit under on tree root repairs and miscellaneous things, but in general, it more or less comes out to where we were planning.
All right, thank you. Mr. Leir, Councilman Barr, or Vice President Barr?
To the Chair, to Mr. Leir, we just dealt with the 2018 version of this in our last meeting, and I'll admit, as we were going through that, I wasn't paying a whole lot of attention to the year, I was just looking at the numbers. And so I'm just curious, why back-to-back meetings, 19 makes sense, but why were we dealing with 18 last time this late?
Well, 2018, the project actually got cut off at the end of the year by, we kind of got some early weather that made it so that we weren't able to finish the 18 program on time. So the 18 program was actually delayed, half of it was delayed, and it was finished up in 19.
I see.
So the final numbers for the 18 were just put together, and then now we just happened to get the 19 all finished up at the same time.
Sure, thanks for explaining that. I'll offer approval for this for consent if there's no objection.
Yes, Councilman Donavich.
Chair, Mr. Leir, how many, maybe I missed it here, but how many miles of sidewalk do you guys anticipate fixing? Are you talking about miles, you're talking, I mean...
Well, we don't, it's hard to say it in miles. I mean, this, for the 19 program, we had just under 600 locations that we do, and it varies from one slab of concrete to, you know, the whole frontage.
I walked a lot of sidewalks this summer, so...
Yeah, and there's plenty of them to be fixed out there. Typically, we'll try and shoot for around 500 or so locations of homeowner ones, and then we also do a number of the city ramps, sidewalk ramps, and miscellaneous repairs for grinding and tree roots as well.
Should I have a question real quick?
Yes.
So I noticed that as we are doing sidewalk repairs, when sidewalks at intersections that cross streets are often repaired, they are repaired with a different formatting with some red texture on there.
Yes.
Can you explain to us why that is? I mean, I have a hunch of why it is, but I'm not the expert, and it might be...
The contrasting dome tactile place that they put in there are for persons with vision problems, so it's easier for them to see the contrast in between, and the domes on there are for blind or sight impaired where they can feel the domes, you know, before they get out into the roadway.
That's, that's good to know, that I wasn't making that up as I was explaining that to people, but that is, no, somebody asked me once, I think that, that's kind of what I thought it was, but it's good to know that, and it's good for people to know that as well. Thank you.
All right, yes, Mr. McCullough.
Not to just ask 30,000 questions for sidewalks, but I'm just curious, when you guys go through and do the grinding of the sidewalks, is that more of like a preventative approach where you'd come back and then do a final replacement, or...
Yeah, the grinding is more of a, it's a temporary that we hope is going to be permanent. Usually, it just buys time. If they start moving, it's going to keep moving almost all the time, but in instances where it's less than, you know, an inch or two, we can kind of touch those up and still make them passable, where once they get to a certain point, you can't grind off too much of the slab, and you have to replace them.
Thank you.
Council?
Madam President, I'll be happy to offer an approving resolution.
Well, you did. I'm sorry. Scott already offered it, my mistake.
The Vice President did.
The Vice President already offered our, I'm sorry, Mr. Barr, Vice President Barr. Okay, so, all right, and that was on consent? Okay, and then we have questions. All right. Thank you, Mr. Leir. We will move on now to item number seven, and this is a, this is a site plan petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission regarding Petition 2019-08-08-13, submitted by Build to Suit Incorporated, construct a new medical clinic on property located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Middlebelt Road and Melbourne Avenue. The street address is 29959 Plymouth in the northeast quarter of Section 35. Mr. Terminus.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, this is a request to construct a new plasma collection center that would be called BioLife, and it's within the Wonderland Village Shopping Center, which is on the south side of Plymouth Road between Middlebelt and Melbourne Roads. The site is about 2.3 acres in size. It has 265 feet of frontage on Plymouth Road and a depth of roughly 380 feet. The subject property is part of the shopping complex known as the Village Shops of Wonderland, and as this site plan shows, as originally approved, the Village Shops included five buildings fronting on Plymouth Road that extended west from Middlebelt Road for a distance of about 1,650 feet. Four of those five original buildings have been constructed. The proposed BioLife would occupy the last remaining building pad, which is located at the far west end of the Village Shops, and this was referred to as Retail Building F on the original plans. That's the one on the far left on this drawing. Retail F was originally approved to be approximately 28,000 square feet in... Retail F was originally approved to be approximately twenty-eight thousand square feet in size. It was a multi-tenant building. The proposed BioLife building would be a single-use structure. It would be one-story in height and about fourteen thousand, three hundred and ninety square feet, so roughly half the size of the original building. As you can see from the site plan, the building would be placed near the middle of the site. There would be parking on the west, the north, and the east sides of the building. The site does not have direct access from Plymouth Road. Instead, access would be provided by the existing drive aisles and maneuvering lanes that are part of the existing layout of Wonderland Village. The building's interior would be divided into three main parts. The front part would be the reception area, donor processing areas, as well as various exam rooms, training, conference, and other administrative offices. There's a middle section, which is labeled donor floor, which contains multiple cubic, or multiple cubicle partitions, and then the back part is used mainly for service. It's a receiving area, processing area, freezers, as well as break rooms and changing rooms. In a C-two zoning district, the minimum required setback is sixty feet from the right-of-way. In this case, the building would be ninety-five feet from Plymouth Road. In terms of parking, there is a requirement for one hundred and five parking spaces. The site plan provides for one hundred and twenty-nine parking spaces, so it fully complies in that respect. Looking at the site plan, too, you'll see that behind the building, there's a separate access drive that would be for pickups and deliveries in this area. There would also be a trash dumpster. There is an enclosure that would be built of masonry and would be about six feet, six and a half feet in height. Looking at the design of the building, there are two different color bricks. There's a dark gray and then a lighter gray. There's also composite siding. That's the other gray color that is above most of the glazing or the windows. Ephes would be used only as a material where those signs are located, so I think there's three areas on the building that would contain the dry material. And then dark bronze metal panels would also be used as part of the design. As you can see, there are signs proposed. What's allowed is one wall sign not to exceed eighty-five square feet in area. This site plan shows, or these plans show three signs on the northeast and west sides of the building, so that's going to require a variance. Existing light, existing light fixtures are already provided, as is most of the parking. That would not change. There was also a fully detailed landscape plan that was presented that shows about twenty-five percent of the site being landscaped, so that, too, complies with our minimum standards. Planning Commission has approved this design. They spent quite a bit of time reviewing the exterior design of the building. Several changes were made. I'll let the architect speak to those. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, questions for Mr. Teramina? Would you like to go to the petitioner? Yes, Councilwoman White.
Mark, can you put up the slide showing the south side of the property?
The south side of the building itself?
The building, yeah.
Sure.
Well, actually, the layout of the, what I'm trying to get at is how far is the, whatever is happening on the south side of this building from the single-family residences back there?
Oh, you know what? To show that, I'm going to go back to the aerial photograph. And what you'll see here, the area highlighted in yellow is the building pad. The area immediately to the south or below that is a vacant, developable part of the original Wonderland Development. The white building in the far, the lower right-hand corner, that's actually the Walmart. So you have to go further, it's off this photograph, but you have to go further to the south in order, before you get to the residential. Let me see if the, this, this plan shows it maybe a little bit better. The yellow area being the residential, so you have several hundred, hundred feet that separate the two.
Okay, that's good, because I know that the homeowners in that area have been upset with the Walmart trucks and so forth being parked back there, but whatever is happening on this piece is very far from impacting those single-family residences, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Oh, one other question, Mark. Do you know, this looks like a private entity. It's not associated with the Red Cross at all?
I do not believe so. I'll let the petitioner respond to that.
All right, thank you.
To the Chair.
Yes, Councilman Danovic.
Mark, does this company, BioLife, have other locations they operate at there?
Yes, it's my understanding they have over a hundred throughout the country. In Michigan, I think the majority of their operations are in Grand Rapids and Ann Arbor, and maybe a few other locations. I believe this is the first Metro Detroit location.
Are they going to add more parking, or the existing parking around it going to be their parking?
No, the existing parking is adequate to, to meet the needs of this, of this development. So, and, and this plan shows it well. You can see the, the area is, you know, is undeveloped, other than the parking around it. That was built in anticipation of what was going to be that retail building F, but was never constructed.
No, I frequent that area a lot. I live next door to it. It's awesome to see that, that some vacant land, some potential development there, so.
Yes, Councilman McCullough.
So, Wonderland Village, I mean, it's been some time, this, this piece of property has been sitting vacant. And this, if I'm right, this is kind of smack dab between the White Castle and then the other property from the Wonderland Village that's, was developed to the east, correct?
Correct.
And so this has been sitting vacant for some time.
That's correct.
And then, last question I have is, there is other medical types of businesses inside the Wonderland Village and in the neighborhood vicinity?
In the vicinity, yes. In Wonderland Village, I apologize, I can't think of anything directly medical related.
I don't know if there was, I think there was urgent care.
There's an urgent care.
There's, okay, thank you.
That's across the street.
All right, no one else has anything for Mr. Teramina? I think we could go to the, would you like to go to the petitioner?
Sure.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, good evening.
If you could tell us who you are, please?
Sure, I'm Jason Harder with Build to Suit. I apologize for my voice. I'm happy to answer any questions, but we work closely with staff on modifications to this site, and we're excited about the potential of being here. We, we represent, or I am here representing the, the development company who goes around and helps do some site selection and handles the front-end work like this. We have a construction company that will actually GC this with local subs. And then the ownership of this building will stay within our organization, and BioLife is a tenant of ours in numerous other locations across the country. They're a great tenant. I don't want to go on and on and not answer questions, but I'm happy to take any that you have.
Vice President Barr?
First of all, thanks for all the work you do with the Planning Commission on this. I read through each of their meetings minutes in detail and could see the evidence of you working with them and responding to their requests, and I think that what we have before us is an attractive building by and large. My only question was, I noticed in those minutes, you made a comment about this matching, I, I may not be quoting you directly, but matching the materials on Wonderland Village, the existing Wonderland Village. And I, maybe I don't have that quote right, but there was some reference to that, and I was looking at this, and I mean, this is a very gray building. It doesn't look like the rest of Wonderland Village, and I was a little surprised by that, because there's a pretty consistent look across that right now.
That's a great question. So I am not an architect by trade. I'm a civil engineer. But we have a team of architects that, that work solely with this client of ours, and they have a trade dress, if you will, that they like to typically have their buildings look like. This is, this is stretching a happy medium, hopefully, between where they like to be and Wonderland Village.
So they have a particular branded look that they're working towards?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so, and this is a long ways, I shouldn't say a long ways, but this is a definite departure from what we've been doing. And it took an architectural brain to sit and look at the building articulations and try and match Wonderland Village multi-tenant shops, and I think they did a pretty good job of capturing most of it.
They did, they did. I saw the evolution in the notes, and, and I do appreciate that, so. I, I don't have an issue with it. I just was curious more what the thinking was there. Thanks for sharing that.
You have, thanks.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman Toy.
Thank you, if I may, to the petitioner. Sir, what, what do you do? I mean, you, are you, you're doing blood, I get it, but, I mean, people come to you from hospitals, or are they referred to by physicians? I know you have one of these in Mount Pleasant, because I used to serve Mount Pleasant in that area, and I remember seeing this. But I, I just wondered, you know, your volume, sounds like you're, you're pretty busy.
Sure. So, BioLife's our client, but I've been through this with them a hundred times, if not a thousand times. So it's a plasma donation center, so
Oh, donation, okay.
They actually take, they actually take the plasma, store it, and then ship it out to two facilities that they have, one on the west coast and one on the east coast, and turn it into different medications that are used for numerous of different...
Well, thank you. That's, you know, Madam Chair, I'm going to offer an approving. I mean, this is such a needed kind of thing, and they've proven themselves throughout many other cities in the state, and it sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Vice President Barr?
I was just going to answer what Councilwoman Toy said, but also just give a little plug to the business. When I was in college, I actually knew a lot of college students that this was an easy money-making opportunity when you're in college, and it sounds funny, but there's a need.
Sure.
They pay for plasma, and I, I knew people in college that were going every two weeks or something like that and doing this, and it was an income stream for them. So, it's a legitimate, it's a legitimate thing to do that serves a legitimate need, and I think it's pretty neat that this is coming to our city.
Absolutely.
I, I do have, I do have a question. I, I'd just like to ask, and I'm, I'm sure that, I, I know the answer, but I'd just like to hear the, someone from the company or representing the company say it. Obviously, you have a, you know, you have fine plans for your trash receptacle. I'm assuming that there, this business generates a significant volume of medical waste that is handled in the specialized way that's required by law, right?
Absolutely, yes. There's a biohazard room actually inside the facility, and all medical waste goes inside there, and nothing goes to the dumpster exterior, and it's hauled away by licensed haulers.
And the company has a good track record of being in compliance with medical, with biohazard disposal?
Absolutely.
Okay. Councilwoman Toy has offered a approving resolution. Would you like that on consent?
Is that permissible, Mr. Attorney?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, then I will.
Okay. Seeing no objections, seeing no objections, we will go ahead and place it on the consent agenda for the February tenth, 2020 meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
All right, with that, we go on to item number eight. This, too, is a site plan petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission. This is regarding petition two zero one nine dash one one dash zero eight dash one five, submitted by Hobbs and Black Architects on behalf of the, I, I hope I'm saying this right, two, two dash slash forty-two Community Church, and I look forward to hearing how you're to say that, to renovate the exterior of the church located on the south side of Five Mile Road between Yale Avenue and Levan Road, three five four seven five Five Mile Road in the northeast quarter of section twenty. Mr. Teramina?
Thank you, Madam President. And on the slide here is actually a view of the building as it exists today. I wanted you to see this before I showed you the proposed changes to the facade, which would only affect the, the north elevation of the building. And this is the side facing Five Mile Road. This is an aerial photograph of the site itself. As you indicated, it's on Five Mile Road between Yale and, in this case, Country Club Drive. This is what the building would look like after it's transformed. Again, only the side facing Five Mile would change in appearance. The changes involve adding new materials and colors in order to transform the appearance of the facade consistent with the church's other locations. And the new materials mostly include corrugated metal, reclaimed wood, some Ephes, as well as some other minor materials. But the, the four main features of the design, and I'll focus in on those areas. First is the tallest feature. This consists of the rectangular-shaped area. This is a wall that's comprised of corrugated metal. In this case, it's painted red, and it's located on the east side, or excuse me, the west side of the facade. Secondly, well, this, this feature is about twenty-five feet in height. The second tallest feature is about twenty feet in height, and that's actually Ephes material that would have like a Ferris finish, and it would give the appearance of a rusted metal or an oxidized steel. So that's the reddish color pattern immediately to the, on the right-hand side of where you see the two four two sign. There's some vertical lines on that, white vertical lines. That's act, those are actually LED or recessed LED accent lighting. The third detail is about nine feet in height, and this is the part of the facade that, it's a rectangular archway that's over the entrance doors. This, too, would consist of corrugated metal and would have a blue finish. The fourth element of the design involves covering the existing brick on the east side of the curtain wall with reclaimed wood siding. So you see that horizontal siding on the left-hand side of the rendering. That's actually a barn wood type of material. I'll let the architect explain that further. But you can also see that that same wood material would be applied somewhat randomly over portions of the stone walls that are located on either side of the entrance. Again, Planning Commission spent quite a lot of time with the petitioner going over this design, tweaking certain elements and colors, and this is what they landed on. And with that, Madam President, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Teramina. Vice President Barr?
Two questions, I think, Mark. One, the, just a kind of a technical question. The recessed LED lighting, is that something we typically allow? Don't we usually have stipulations? I'm not saying I have a problem with it, but don't we usually have standard stipulations against something like that?
We do. We typically prohibit LED light bands or strips or neon-type of lighting, unless it's in the form of accent lighting, and, and we can verify that. We've been told that this is recessed. It's used strictly for accent purposes. Yeah, I think your review this evening would confirm whether or not that's something that would fall outside of the prohibition for LED light band or other type of lighting, which is actually a condition of the approval that is presented to you by the Planning Commission.
Okay, I was, I was just going to ask question one A, which is, so you said that the condition that they had, I could go look, but you can probably tell me faster, was that it would be okay to do this? Or they put the typical...
They actually prohibited it without specifying whether or not this was...
They did prohibit it.
They prohibited it as a, as a, a standard condition of approval without really judging this application against that particular rule. So, again, if, if the city council determines that this falls under that prohibition, then it would have to be removed, or they'd have to go to the zoning board of appeals. Otherwise, as I believe, this, we could view this, and we'd look at the details when the building plans are submitted. It could qualify as accent lighting, which we do see throughout the community that is not subject to that prohibition.
Okay.
You'll see it a lot of time under soffits, and it's done on a, you know, again, on a low-key basis, I guess.
Second question I have. We have a number of renderings in here of different options for the coloring of the corrugated metal. None of them on my screen look anything like what you're showing me up there, so. I guess we'll probably get a chance to see materials, but I, I'm trying to figure out which one of what we have corresponds to that, or if that's something totally new, or we can wait for the petitioner.
So that would be, it would be labeled as option three.
Okay.
So hopefully, the documents you have...
It looks way better on my screen than it does up there, but we can talk to the petitioner about that.
And I think he does have samples.
Good. I'll look forward to that when we get to that point, so, thanks.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman McCullough.
So, touching based on what Vice President Barr was bringing up, I'm sure that there could be a photometric plan that would maybe show it being in accent lighting. I don't know if that's possible to do, just to show the lighting output that would be affected by the road. But just looking at this, I got to say that I was pretty excited to see the reclaimed lumber, the metal panels, just looking at the old facade and bringing it into 2020. The sustainability components that went into this design are, are pretty, pretty awesome. And the one question, maybe the petitioner, if you want to pop up, my question would be is, okay, and this is just a general question. So you've got reclaimed lumber, which is awesome. How do you, what do you use on the elements? Is there some kind of a coating that would go over it? I don't know if you know the answer to it, but I was just curious. You know, it's almost like an external exterior pallet wall.
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Eric Rauch. I'm the executive pastor at two forty-two Community Church, so hopefully...
Two forty-two, thank you.
That helps answer your question. We get our name from the Book of Acts, chapter two, verse forty-two. That describes the first church, and so, just a little description there for you guys. Yeah, we're excited to be in this community and take a church that has a long, rich history here since nineteen forty-five and, and continue it forward. And so, specific to a couple of the questions, I heard a question about lighting. I would not anticipate any foot candles coming out of that lighting. The reason being is because those are very deeply shielded lights. We've used them in other, other one of our locations, and, and there's no real light that's coming out of them. It just kind of highlights that area and breaks up that mass of that... It just kind of highlights that area and breaks up that mass of that kind of steel look a bit. So we just feel like it, it breaks up that mass a bit, and we really like the look of it. Becomes an issue, we're, we would move it as well, but we'd prefer to keep it in. But as far as, you know, it being a light source, it's, it's not really. It is certainly accent lighting, in our opinion. The other question you asked was in regards to the barnwood, and how do you treat that and all? And we've ran into this in previous projects, too. You know, that barnwood will be anywhere between 100 to 200 years old, and there's actually a clear coat that goes over it to help protect it a little bit. You also don't want, you know, there, there is, as well, like, we make sure that we don't have barnwood that has lead paints in it, as an example. That's actually a big issue with reclaimed lumber now. And so, we, we do that research as well, and make sure that's not present in our barnwood too. And so, those are things we've ran into in the past, and those are how we've addressed them, so.
I'm excited to see a project like this and taking a facade from something that's dated and bringing it up to, to a nice, cool look like this. I'd be more than happy to offer approving resolution for consent.
We still have some questions, I think. And before we, did anyone else have any questions of Mr. Chairman, before we ask more questions of the petitioner? Mr. Dolly?
No, I just have a comment.
Please.
Hey, this looks great. I mean, this is, uh, it's very forward and modern, and, you know, I, I think it's great to see, this, this will be a, a new congregation utilizing a building that had been previously utilized since 1945? Is that what you were saying?
Great question. So, we recently, this past June, adopted what was Compass Christian Church. And so what that looks like is the existing congregation, the, the business side, if you will, the church is now ran by 242, and then will be changing the name here on February 9th, and, and kind of updating the imaging a little bit. And so it offers an opportunity to take churches, many of them these days, that maybe are 50, 70 years old or so, and offers an opportunity to kind of reimagine them a little bit and kind of bring them up, up to a little more modern stance. And so certainly the imaging is part of that, and the architecture's a part of that, along with the other elements, too. But the existing congregation is still there. In fact, they voted for us to be merged together, so.
And what's the denomination?
So we're a non-denominational Christian church.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's great, and I'll, I'll just comment that there was a statistic at some point, I don't know if it's still on point, but I would imagine it, it probably is, that Livonia had more churches than houses of worship per capita than any other city in the country, and I think that might be still true. And it's nice to see that you're renovating this church structure, you know, making updates and improvements possibly to the congregation, how it's run. But we've seen that at other physical churches and congregations here in the city of Livonia quite often, especially recently, and it's great to see that. So, welcome to the community, I think it's great, and I don't want you to change anything. Thank you.
Councilman Danovic.
To the chair, Mark. The six options, the only difference is just the color, not actually the material being used?
Uh, that's a good question, I think.
They all look similar architecturally speaking, I didn't know if there was a difference.
I think that's accurate, I think, yeah, that it was mostly just variations on the, on the colors is what we looked at, at our last study session. And again, it was this option, um, three, excuse me.
And then you, this is just the north-facing, the eastern-west side of the building? Those are not going to be updated, they're going to stay the same?
At the present time, they will stay, remain as they are now, yes.
Okay. And to the petitioner, as a believer, welcome to the community, it's pretty exciting to see this level of updating taking place, potentially taking place. And in terms of lighting, I think I got a general idea of what you're saying. These aren't necessarily a source of illumination, more just aesthetically pleasing, it kind of highlights the differences between the materials a little bit, I think. I, I think it's absolutely beautiful, so, welcome to Livonia.
Thank you.
Vice President Barr.
Yeah, can I, I guess you just turned it for me, I was wanting, and actually, do you mind just passing that up here? I'd like to see up close the blue. I, I trust the work that Planning Commission did, but, all right. Yeah, that, that looks better in person. Up there, it looks really.
Can we get the?
Yeah, I, I can't show you.
It looks, it looks really royal-bluey on the screen, like, and I like the, I don't know if the right word is softer or muted or whatever of that, better than what I was seeing up there, so I just wanted to see that, thank you.
Just, I, I, we're trying to get the screen back, right? There we go.
No, I had to confirm, it is option three, this is the one.
Okay, I have a question, because it's not entirely clear from, to me, from this picture. The existing, what I'll call the flanking stone walls to the, to the east and the west, those remain, is that correct? I can't, I can't really tell from this rendering, but as I read the, as I read the Planning Commission notes, yeah, okay. So, how do you, you transition from your modern materials to the existing 1957 stone walls with some reclaimed pieces of wood on the, I'm, I'm not clear how that transition works.
Yeah. So, the stone wall is a natural stone wall, it's been there for many years, and, and that's actually an element and material that's even up to date, like, that's something you see pretty often now. To help blend in together the transition between the wood, the barnwood and that, we decided to start kind of tearing that away a little bit. And so, just literally kind of piecing it on top of, of that, and it helps kind of, in our opinion, kind of blend these two together, because our thought is, when we looked at the renderings before, that those older stone wall columns kind of stood out as old, it kind of looked like we centered, you know, worked on the middle section but didn't do much on the ends. And just, we felt like it really helped blend those two things together. So we thought it was a, just a neat kind of creative way to, to provide that, so.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am Chair. Yes, Councilwoman Toy.
If I may to the petitioner, sir, were you going to do anything on the inside? I know that's not on our agenda tonight, but I just wondered if some remodeling goes on, on the inside there.
Great question. Yeah, we've done some already.
Okay.
Yep, not, we're not moving any walls or anything, we've repainted and did new floors and new lighting and everything. And so, we're certainly looking at, and new signage and all, so that's been in effect for several months, and will continue in the months ahead, so.
Yeah, and that was going to be my next question, your sign. Were you gonna try and bring some of those elements in the sign, do you think? The monuments sign you currently have?
Yeah, so, we recently just quickly changed the sign just yesterday, I believe, to say 242 Community Church. As we look to do this construction in the summer, I would anticipate we're going to relook at that ground sign as well and do something more permanent and a little bit nicer. We put a idea up here in the, on the plans, but that, that's not an official submittal for a sign permit, but we would like to take a look at that and, and have it match in better, so.
Did you find any golf balls over there?
How many of Brian was there yesterday?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Yes, Vice President Barr.
You mentioned the recessed LED lighting on some of your other locations.
Yeah.
Which of your other, I'm just looking on mine here, which of your other churches have that?
Yeah. Our Ann Arbor location has it on the exterior as well, so, we built a community center in Ann Arbor that was completed two years ago, and, and so that has it on the exterior of the main entry there. We have, we use them on the interior of some of our projects, too, including our Brighton location has a hallway that has them on the interior, so.
Okay. Just a reminder, I, I believe there's a motion out there, and just to the maker of the motion, before we finish this up, we need to specify that, if, if we're okay with that, we need to make sure we specify that that condition prohibiting the LED lighting is removed, or else this is going to be allowed. So I just want to make sure we remind that. That's it.
Okay. Yes, Councilman Danovic.
To the chair, sir, on the existing stone wall, the transitioning that you mentioned earlier, it was on the screen and it's off now, are you actually going to grind down the existing stone so that the, that the pieces are flush?
We're not.
Or you should put the pieces on top of the stone?
Yep, those pieces are about three-quarters of an inch thick, and so we're just going to put them right on the stone.
And how are those affixed?
Uh, I would imagine they'd be used, like a tap con screw or something like that, something that has a small head on it and wouldn't be seen, but would go right into that, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, Council, Councilwoman White.
I just, as one council member, I like the accent lighting, and I think what you've done, your proposal is beautiful, so, I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
You're going to heaven.
I can sleep better at night, thank you.
All right, so, sorry. Okay, Brandon's offered, Brandon's offered, Councilmember McCullough's offered an approving resolution, but it does, at this time, it does, the LED lighting is not permitted based on what we have from the Planning Commission, is that correct?
Uh, well, that would have to, that would, that would be a decision we would have had to have made, but I think I would recommend that we would amend, that we amend the resolution to specifically exclude the application as shown on these drawings from that prohibition.
No exposed LED. So, Councilmember McCullough, was it your intention to offer the approving resolution with the LED lighting in it?
Correct.
Okay. All right, and did you, did you ask for that on consent?
Yes.
Okay. Are there, so, just to be clear, we'd have to amend one of the standard conditions that comes from the Planning Commission that doesn't allow any exposed LED lighting. So are there any objections to placing this in?
What does that process look like going forward if they, if they wanted to add those lights? Is that some sort of waiver process, or they just cannot add those lights?
Madam President, if I may.
Yes, please, Mr. Chairman.
So, so we'll keep the language intact with a, an addendum to that, that specifically excludes the lights as shown on these, on these plans.
For this specific.
Yes. So we are allowing lights.
So, so they would be able to, they would be able to do it.
Yes, that, that, the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just so I understand, the way I put it down was that with the condition that the LED lighting is removed except as to the accent lighting as is shown on the, on the drawing? Does that summarize, Councilmember McCullough, with the?
Correct.
Yeah, I think that's correct, but we maintain, you know, we, we maintain the standard prohibition.
Correct.
Okay. Set.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, anyone else? All right, then that's on the consent agenda for February 10th. Thank you very much for coming. I'm a neighbor of yours and look forward to seeing this project come along, so thank you.
Thank you, we're excited to be here.
All right, moving along, we're on new business, item number nine. This is proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended. This comes to us from the Department of Law to amend chapter 88 of Title IX, sale of tobacco products to persons under age 21, to bring into alignment with the federal law an expected amendment of Michigan's Youth Tobacco Act. Mr. Burnier.
As council members are aware, last month, the federal government changed the sale of tobaccos to prohibit anyone under the age of 21. Our ordinance clearly says under the age of 18 now, so we want the ability to enforce the law between 18 and 21 under local ordinance as opposed to state law when they eventually change it, which they are going to do very soon. So it's really just raising the, the age to 21, consistent with federal law and what state law will be.
All right.
So move.
I was going to offer the approving on consent if there's no objection. Well, this is an amendment, so it's got to go on the regular, but I, I do support this.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember White, thank you, Mr. Burnier. Item number 10 is a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended. This comes to us from the Department of Law to amend chapter 16 of Title 12, Parks and Playgrounds, to add Washington Park and land adjacent to Rudolph L. Kleiner Park to the roster of city park lands. Mr. Burnier.
This is a matter, just so we can actually get it on our, on our roster of parks.
Madam Chair.
Pardon me?
Nothing, I, I know White had a question, I had a.
Yes, Council.
I have a question to our city attorney, Paul. I'm very familiar with this property since it's around the corner from my house. I was looking for a diagram, though, and I'm trying to picture. So, right now, the park goes to the edge of Vacated Hubbard Road, and this would bring it the full right-of-way distance east, as well as, when we talk about the west, 100 feet of specific lots. So, I'm just trying to picture this in my mind, does that mean that the park will now extend the width of Hubbard, Vacated Hubbard Road, as well as anything to the west of that vacated road? So in other words, what I refer to as the Ruskele property will remain as a property that will ultimately be developed for residential purposes, right?
With permission of council, I'm going to ask Mr. Davis, who's in the crowd, if he could come forward, because I think he knows that answer better than I do exactly where it lays out.
Through the chair, I don't think I articulated my question very well, but I'm just trying to picture where this extension will take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson White. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. I am not an engineer, nor do I ever claim to be one, but reading this description, I would read it as you do, where it is going to include the Vacated Hubbard Road and the 100 feet west in addition to that.
Okay, I, I think I understand, so.
I don't know if I've answered your question, but I'm sorry.
My summary of, or my conclusion that the property that is available for residential